Good evening, everybody. Tonight, before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jason Howard from Stone Creek Church to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would join me and bow your head and let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we go through spring to summer, we begin tonight by asking for your wisdom and guidance for our governing council who continues the work of helping our city grow and thrive. Many decisions are set before them, and we pray that the council members, and the mayor, and all the officials gathered here will know how to use their unique skills and abilities that you've given them in order to truly excel in their work. In the Scriptures, you remind us that we should promote peace, order, and justice in our community by obeying, honoring, and supporting the governing authorities that you have established. And so, tonight, we pray for our mayor and the council members that are sat here, and we ask that you graciously grant them a sense of welfare, the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice, righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And, Father, we also pray for personal peace in their lives and in their families, and above all, a joy in their task. And so, in closing, we pray that the agenda set before them tonight would be one that they would diligently go through, and that, as a community, we would join them in pursuing the best for our city, truly the best city in all of Georgia. In Jesus, it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much for leading us. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, June 6, 2016, to order. Sooty, if you could please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the June 6, 2016, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cellphones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There are no public comments for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, address and organization, if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
For the record, Councilmember Bert Hewitt is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, everybody, and we appreciate you being here, and we are also, it's an honor to have some special guests here for proclamation tonight. We'll be there in just a few minutes. So, Sooty, if you'll please sound the next item.
Our next item is the approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 16121.
Okay. Do we, staff, do you have anything that you want to add or take off the agenda?
Respectfully, Mayor, we'd like to move Presentation Number Three, which is the Trust for Public Land. I take that back. We were thinking that the person may be late, but they have just walked in, so ignore that.
Okay. Anybody, council, anything? If not, I will open up for a motion on the agenda.
Mayor, I move that we accept the agenda as provided by the city clerk.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria, a second from Councilmember Koontz. While in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Next item's public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Sooty, do we have any general public comment?
Yes, sir, we do have three cards.
Okay.
And the first one comes from Michael Chambers.
Mr. Chambers here? Okay. I don't see, so if you will call the next person.
Next person is David Gower.
Is Mr. Gower here?
And then we have, we have Ms. Laura Renshaw.
Okay.
My name is Laura Renshaw. I live at 1060 Birmingham Road, Milton, Mayor and Council. Preserve Rural Milton was founded to address the community's dissatisfaction regarding the discrepancy between the city's vision statement and what was actually happening to the land and the city. The vision statement reads, "Milton is a distinctive community embracing small-town life and heritage while preserving and enhancing our rural character." The 2030 Comprehensive Plan for Future Development is the document that's supposed to be the guiding force between the, behind the city administrators, planning commissions, Board of Zoning Appeals, Design Review Board, city councils, and mayor's decision, decisions. As a nonpartisan organization, we have pushed, prodded, researched, educated, and offered potential solutions to try to get the city to follow the Comprehensive Plan, and more recently, the 2014 Conservation Plan. We look for and examine all approaches to address the problems. We believe that creativity, open dialogue, and out-of-the-box thinking are important to finding solutions, and have tried to bring this to the community discussion. We would like to believe that this is why we have garnered the attention and the support of the majority of the council and many people in the community. They see it, too. Rigid adherence to AG1 zoning has left development profoundly off course from the vision of our comprehensive land use plan. At a recent council meeting, it was refreshing to hear Councilwoman Matt Koontz make a presentation which referenced the 2030 Comprehensive Plan more than 10 times. He clarified that the plan directs city leadership and administration to adopt conservation-based development and planning, which up until recently has not been done. This was a rare but important reminder of the principles on which the city was founded, and ideals that should be guiding decisions. If only we could be reminded more often that decisions should be consistent with the plan that citizens themselves helped to write. This is why we find it puzzling that the Milton Coalition's recent articles described the same presentation as disgraceful and a marketing presentation for the developer. It seems that any statement that does not disagree with their views is discredited. In addition, this was also cited in the mayor's veto as a part of the decision or procedural problems to make his veto. Unfortunately, this group and elected officials continue to dominate this community discussion with an us-versus-them mentality, continuing to try to marginalize and discredit those who disagree with them. Regardless as to the form their arguments take, whether it be liberal versus conservative, special interest developer versus citizen, or subdivision resident versus large property owner, this framing of the discussion is divisive, and it needs to change. Problems are not black and white, and neither are people. It's important, as a community, that we recognize the dire situation we are in as a result of not adhering to the city's land use plan and groups attempting to block all change. It is time to stop character attacks, inflammatory petitions, and continual insinuations of interior motives. I implore you, as an elected governing body, to please show your leadership skills by standing up for the comprehensive land use plan and making it clear that the divisive rhetoric that has infected the community will not impact decision-making, and that it will not be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Sooty, do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, let's move on to consent agenda. If you'll please call those items.
First item is approval of a Parks and Recreation Department agreement for outside providers between the City of Milton and Agape Academy LLC, Agenda Item Number 16122. Our second and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of an Addendum Number One to the contract for acquisition of right-of-way for Project HPP 00000700313, State Route 372, Crab Apple Road, Birmingham Highway, Intersection Improvements, Agenda Item Number 16123.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Bill? Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Luss, and I apologize, but it sounded like I heard Councilmember Thurman the second. If that's correct, was that?
That was my.
I heard both. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, we will move on to reports and presentations. Sooty, if you'll please sound the first item.
First item is a proclamation honoring Cambridge and Milton students who chose to serve their country in a military career. This is being presented by Councilmember Bill Luss.
Thank you, Sooty. Today marks the 72nd anniversary of D-Day, the longest day in our history. It was the assault on the Axis forces in Normandy. Over 7,000 of our troops gave their lives on that day, in addition to the thousands of other Allied forces that participated in that assault. It showed the American resolve, not only defending our homeland, but defending the land of our friends worldwide. Today, 72 years later, we continue to face threats, not only in our homeland, but worldwide amongst our friends and others around the globe. About 1% of our population has chosen to participate in our military. This 1% is protecting over 300 million people in the United States, along with millions of our friends worldwide. Tonight, we're here to recognize those 1%ers, and we're honored to have them in our audience, representatives from both Milton High School and Cambridge High School, as well as their family members of the students, and some of the staff is here, too, I believe. So, tonight, from Milton High School, recognize Jack Bluth, Preston Dawes, along with his mother Barbara, Clayton Marshall, along with his parents Keith and Lisa, his brother Alex, grandmothers Wanda Haas and Dolores Marshall. From Cambridge High School, Amy Price, Assistant Principal, along with students Elijah Daniel Abley, Keaton James Bruder, Benjamin Nicholas Faber, Benjamin Emanuel Pedzinian, close, Michael Andrew Takacs, Matthew Ryan Hughes, Alexander Jackwith, and his father Eric, and Seth Joseph Schroder. This is a proclamation honoring Cambridge High School and Milton High School students who chose to serve their country in a military career. Whereas, one of the main responsibilities of our federal government is to provide for the common national defense, and whereas, the branches of the United States Military have a long and prestigious history of shaping and producing the finest young minds in America, producing not only soldiers, but also scholars, national leaders, and diplomats. And whereas, every year, thousands of students across America choose to pursue both higher education and military service by attending U.S. Military Service Academies, military universities, or enrolling in officer training programs. And whereas, in order to qualify for selection, these students must excel in academic, athletic, and leadership abilities. And whereas, these students will be developed mentally, morally, and physically, and will be imbued with the highest ideals of duty and loyalty, and with the core values of honor, courage, and commitment before being commissioned as officers. Whereas, through their dedication, these students have displayed exemplary character by choosing to better serve their country, their community, their families, and themselves at a time in their lives when such an important choice is honorable. And whereas, Cambridge High School students Elijah Daniel Abley, Keaton James Bruder, Benjamin Nicholas Faber, Benjamin Emanuel Pedzinian, and Michael Andrew Takacs will join the Marines. Amy Grace Dervician will attend the United States Naval Academy. Matthew Ryan Hughes received an ROTC scholarship to attend the University of Oregon. Alexander Jackwith will join the Air Force, and Seth Joseph Schroder will join the Coast Guard. Milton High School students, Jack Bluth, will attend the Air Force Academy. Preston Dawes received an Army ROTC scholarship to attend the Citadel. Angus Ho received an Army ROTC scholarship to attend Auburn University. Clayton Marshall received an Army ROTC scholarship to attend Clemson University. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, hereby honor Milton students who choose to serve their country in a military career, given under our hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 6th day of June 2016. So, would each of the students and their relatives come forward, and if council would come down, will they present this proclamation?
I'd just like to say something. I mentioned a minute ago, I got some proud parents here, but just so you guys, not only proud parents, we got proud citizens, we got proud grandparents, and Rick says, we got proud mayor, city council, staff, where it's just an honor for us to have you guys here, and we can't say a heartfelt thank you enough to really be worthy of what you guys have done, and what you did, and what you know, we're behind you all the way. If you guys need anything, feel free to shoot me an email, or phone council members or staff, whatever, we would love to help support you. I'd also like to thank you for your service.
All right, Sooty, if you want to call the next presentation?
Next presentation is recognition of Perry Mason's service on the City of Milton's Design Review Board. This is being presented by Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Okay, I'm coming down. Perry and Ruby, if you wouldn't mind stepping to the podium, that'd be great.
I just wanted to do a real quick presentation, Ruby, for you very much, and you back. You know, Milton, we operate with a lot of volunteers, it's been a long time, a lot of things, and we all have our, Perry is a much easier to get into, and Perry, I've had a chance to know him, and Ruby as well, for, gosh, since 2011, and when I was on the council, it was a great privilege to be able to ask him to be a part of our Design Review Board, and Ruby as well, technically, because it is a sacrifice to serve for the city as well, so the family is just as much a part of this city, and all your time that you spend, too. So, you know, I have a policy with every one of my appointees, is say, look, I don't care what you think as far as how you, you know, make any decision you feel is best, but just tell me how you feel on anything, and Perry and I have always had great communication in all of our discussions, and haven't always agreed, but, you know, for the most part, we have, and he has done a great job as far as things go, so I'm just happy to have him here as part of this, and I'm sad to see him go, and I got the call that he got a new job and time commitments were taking him away, but as an honor, I just want to say thank you, and this plaque is for you, as far as your service goes for the city, and Ruby has as much yours as well. Perry, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Perry, you mind if the council comes up?
So, we got a picture.
And as I always say, we wouldn't be anywhere near the city that we are without all our volunteers, so thank you, not only Perry, but everyone else here that's a volunteer. All right, Sooty, if you would call the next item, please.
Our next item is a presentation by the Trust for Public Land regarding green space public opinion results, Ms. Kathy Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. As part of the city's consideration of the general obligation bond for green space, the city asked the Trust for Public Land to perform a feasibility study for the bond. As part of that study, the Trust for Public Land performed a public opinion telephone poll regarding the bond, and Mr. Will Abiger from the Trust for Public Land is here tonight to present the results of that poll. And, sorry, council, this in your packet, this paper right here is, are the results that he's going to speak about, so you have it in front of you.
I'm Mayor Lockwood, members of the council. Thank you very much for inviting the Trust for Public Land to present to you this evening. Glad to be back in the City of Milton tonight. As you may remember from my presentation at the meeting in May, this is sort of the second step in the methodology that we recommend that communities go through, who are considering dedicated funding for parks and conservation, and that is assessing voter attitudes about a potential ballot measure, and that's exactly what we did here in the City of Milton. We worked with a professional pollster called North Star Opinion Research. The principal there is a gentleman named Whit Ayers. To conduct our survey for us, we surveyed 251 randomly selected registered voters in Milton. The survey was conducted shortly after I was here last, in late May, and the margin of error for that survey, that sample size, is about 6.19 plus or minus points. The primary thing we tested in the poll was a $25 million bond referendum to acquire land and interest in conservation land for the purposes of protecting farmland, natural areas of wildlife habitat, and providing recreational and park facilities and improvements. So, at the very beginning of the poll, without providing the survey respondents with really any other information, and this was a telephone survey, I don't think I mentioned that, we read them the actual ballot language, much like it would appear on the ballot, should you decide to refer such a question to the voters here in Milton. And the support for the $25 million bond was very strong. 75% of the voters that we interviewed here in Milton said they would vote yes. 15% said they would vote no, and 10% were undecided. And I can tell you from our work on public opinion surveys with other communities in Georgia, we just actually completed a similar survey with voters in Johns Creek on a very similar question, and around the country, to see that level of support on that initial ballot test without providing the survey respondents with any other information about the bond, or how you would spend the money, or any of those kind of things, that's a very high level of support. And it indicates to us that, should you decide, you want to give voters in Milton an opportunity to vote on such a question. There's a very good chance the measure would be successful on the November general election ballot this year. There were a lot of other things that we asked in the poll, and you see that here in the memo that's before you. We provided voters with information about how the program might be structured. We tested a number of different ways the funds could be used, or projects about that you've been considering, and your citizens have been considering as you go through this project, process of developing some acquisition criteria. And after providing voters with all that information, the support remained really statistically the same, with 76% saying they would vote yes, 22% saying they would vote no, and 2% undecided. Virtually, well, all of the accountability measures that we tested in the poll received more than two-thirds support from Milton voters, and Milton voters overwhelmingly supported all of the uses for funds for the $25 million bond that we tested. So, I am quite confident and recommending to you that we believe such a $25 million bond referendum here on the November election in Milton would have a very good chance for passage. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Joe?
Yeah. Appreciate the information, and obviously, it would appear, just from a numbers point of view, there's strong support for what we talked about, and I don't know if there's, obviously, there's no way to predict what would happen if such a language appeared on a ballot somewhere, but do you have any background, or maybe some experience with how these type of referendums do when they have this type of support, or is there nothing that we could draw beyond this?
We have a lot of background on that, as I mentioned to you when I was here before. We've worked on over, our nearly 500 successful park and land conservation ballot measures with cities and counties and states across the country, including about a dozen here in Georgia, and when we see this kind of level of support in that initial ballot test on the poll of those measures that we polled and then have gone to the ballot, 95% of them end up being approved by the voters. have gone to the ballot, 95% of them have ended up being approved by the voters.
Okay. Okay. Obviously, by the, uh, by the poll and the folks that, uh, did weigh in, it certainly shows a wide margin of support.
And the, just, uh, I should have mentioned this at the outset, but the, the sample that we drew for this poll of registered voters in Milton reflects the overall demographic of the electorate here in terms of, uh, race, gender, party affiliation, age, all the typical demographic factors that you would look at. Obviously, it's just a snapshot of how voters felt, as you indicated on that night that we served them, but based on our experience in doing, uh, working on these kind of ballot measures across the country, there's a, there's a strong likelihood of passage here.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathy, anything else? We good?
Uh, no, I have, um, no, none at this time.
Okay. All right, Sooty, if you would please call the first presentation items.
First item is consideration of RZ 16 dash 02 VC 16 dash 01, to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to CUP Community Unit Plan to develop 50 single-family homes on 63.57 acres at an overall density of 0.79 units per acre and a concurrent variance to increase the maximum lot coverage from 20% to 50% for each individual lot, section 64 dash 1141D1B. This is agenda item number 16086. Next, consideration of RZ 1518, to amend the AG1 Agricultural District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 2, Agenda Item Number 16124. Third is consideration of RZ 15 dash 19, to amend the R1 Single Family Residential District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 3, Agenda Item Number 16125. Consideration of RZ 15 dash 20, to amend the R2 Single Family Residential District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 4, Agenda Item Number 16126. Our fifth presentation item this evening is consideration of RZ 15 dash 21, to amend the R2A Single Family Residential District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 5, Agenda Item Number 16127. Next, consideration of RZ 1523, to amend the CUP Community Unit Plan District, Chapter 64, Article 6, Division 23, Agenda Item Number 16128. Next, consideration of RZ 15 dash 24, to amend the Rural Milton Overlay for Single Family Type Uses, Section 64 1141, Agenda Item Number 16129. Next, consideration to amend Chapter 50 subdivisions and create Section 50 dash 162 Rural Design, Agenda Item Number 16130. Our ninth and final first presentation item this evening, consideration of V16 dash 003, the Reserve at Providence, Providence Road, the Providence Group of Georgia Custom Homes LLC, to reduce the front setback from 60 feet to 50 feet, Lot 21, 60 feet to 45 feet, Lot 3, 60 feet to 40 feet, Lots 4, 22, 23, and 30, 60 feet to 20 feet, Lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 19, and 20, Section 64 dash 416B, and to allow a height increase from 28 feet to 33 feet, Lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 19, and 20, Section 64 dash 114C1. This is Agenda Item Number 16131, and we have our 10th, which is consideration of changes to the City of Milton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 48 Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Agenda Item Number 16132.
Okay. Now we'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve for our first presentation items number 2 through 10. I will be recusing myself on item number 1 when it comes to force, you know, next two weeks, so I would like to recuse myself on the approving of the first presentation of it.
Okay. So I've got a motion for approval of all first presentation items with the exception of item number 1, RZ 16 dash 02 VC 16 dash 01. Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Thurman, and a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous.
Now we need a motion to approve the first item. Uh, so move.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion for approval for item number 1 on first presentation, from Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Koots. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Nope, I recuse myself.
Right. Well, I'm sorry, it's unanimous out of those that voted, with, uh, Councilmember, um, Thurman recusing herself on that. We'll, uh, move on to the public hearing. Sooty, will you please call the first item?
Consideration of an Amendment to the Charter of the City of Milton, Georgia, for the purpose of clarifying the income limitations applicable to the homestead tax exemptions available to seniors age 65 and over, and disabled persons with moderate to low incomes. Agenda Item Number 16115. This was discussed at May 9th City Council Work Session. First presentation was at the May 16th Regular City Council Meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Yeah, appears to be on, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have on your agenda this evening a public hearing regarding a proposed modification to the Charter of the City of Milton. This will be one of, actually, two, uh, public hearings we will have with respect to this proposed charter amendment. This is ground that we have held before in here with respect to the underlying basis for the proposed charter modification. I do want to make one point clear from a procedural standpoint, and that is, of course, municipalities like counties have home rule of power. Uh, the county's home rule of power is found in the Constitution. The city's very equivalent. Home rule of power is found in state statute, and neither of those modifications to the charter or enabling legislation actually require a public hearing. We are in fact having a public hearing for purposes of just soliciting public input, but it's not required. All that is required, uh, is certain legal notice requirements and that this matter be adopted at two back-to-back council meetings, which is in fact what will presumably occur if the council is, is, is of a mind to approve it. That will be once this evening, not at this agenda item, that will be later when it comes up as an agenda item under your new business agenda, and then also, we will have another public hearing on June 20th. At that time, you will have to approve it again. You have to approve it twice. Uh, after that set of approvals, we will then take the resolution, we will provide it to the Clerk of Court of Fulton County, and also provide it to the Georgia Secretary of State, which is how you effectuate a modification, uh, of your charter with respect to those topics upon which that we can change locally. Uh, council members, this is the clarification with respect to the, uh, low-income senior homestead exemption. Again, we have talked about this, um, on several different work sessions and meetings. Uh, if you can look into the proposed amendment itself, you will see on Section 6.35, that's on page 2 of your agenda packet, you will see that the change that has been made is very simple. It is simply striking language, that it is our position is unnecessary and results in an improper and candidly absurd result, which is the stacking or the doubling of the income exemption that could result candidly in individuals making over $126,000 receiving the low-income, uh, senior exemption. Uh, Mr. Aaron Myers from my office is here to answer any questions. We have already obviously answered some questions, but if the council has more, uh, we might want to get to the new business section before you begin to ask any questions, and Mr. Mayor simply open it up to public hearing pursuant to the agenda item this evening. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right. So if there's not any specific questions right in the second, I will open it up for any, is there any public comment?
There is not, sir.
Okay. And I'll, I'll close the public hearing on this, and, uh, we'll move on to our next item.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just as a point of record, and I know that we don't read emails, but there was an email from a Mr. Travis Mills who asked that it be placed in the record, and I just want to note for the record, it will be so placed in the record.
Okay. Yeah, we can clarify that everyone should probably receive that. Okay. Um, so our, the public hearing's now closed, there's no public comment. We can, uh, move on to our zoning agenda, which we have none or unfinished business, Sooty, so we can move on to new business.
Our new business item is consideration of an amendment to the Charter of the City of Milton, Georgia, for the purpose of clarifying the income limitations applicable to the homestead tax exemptions available to seniors age 65 and over and disabled persons with moderate to low incomes. Agenda Item Number 16 dash 115. This was discussed at May 9th Council Work Session. First presentation at May 16th Council Regular Meeting. The public hearing was held today, June 6th. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the other shoe to drop with respect to the public hearing that we just had with respect to this proposed charter amendment. I will say that the resolution in your agenda packet is, just as we had discussed, the expectation would be that if you approve it this evening, that is not the final action on this matter. We will in fact advertise and have another public hearing on June 20th. I would also point out that in the resolution in your agenda packet, it speaks of adoption on May 16th and June 6th. Uh, there, there needs to be another date added there, and that would be on June 20th as well. Again, this is the resolution we would actually send to the Secretary of State, so if there is a motion to approve, I would ask that at that last item where it talks about adoption, that we add a June 20th anticipated date as well. But members of the council, now is the time for you to ask any questions of me or Mr. Meyer, who has come here, and any questions you have with respect to what this does, although I know you may have before, please feel free to do so. Yes, sir.
Okay. Karen?
This doesn't change the way we're handling the situation at all. All this does is clarify the way we're handling it is the way we're going to continue to handle it.
That is correct. Councilmember Thurman, thank you.
Okay. Joe?
Okay. So my question is, does this just provide us with clarifying language so that the interpretation of our intent is more, is done correctly? In other words, my concern is that the language that we use to describe how this calculation was done was ambiguous and could lead somebody down the wrong path, and all we're doing is trying to shore that language up so that there is no ambiguity. Is that...
That is, that, that's exactly right. I mean, it is our position that if you read within the context of where this law came from, and you, you read what this law was supposed to accomplish, the way it is written on the pieces of paper is inconsistent with that, and it needs to be clarified, so to, to harmonize with the way that we have been doing it and will continue to do it since the inception of Milton. And Councilmember Longoria, I do want to turn this over to Aaron because I want him to actually speak to you on this, uh, because he actually had the discussions, but one of the questions that you had asked at the last meeting, I forget whether it was, I think it may have been a work session, on this topic was some of the other governments, how they had used and applied this information historically, particularly Fulton County. As you know, of course, that would have been what our citizens were used to before Milton came into creation, and so, Aaron, would you mind providing the council sort of your, the product of your inquiry into that?
When this, when this issue was first brought up to our attention in late January, early February, we began the process of reviewing the charter and reaching out to other cities in this area, Fulton County cities, and reaching out to Fulton County to confirm whether or not Milton had been applying this consistently. Uh, this was after we realized that everyone was working off identical language in their charters. When we first spoke with Fulton, it was late February, uh, the person I spoke with told me that they had been applying it exactly as Milton had. Uh, at our, I believe it was the May 16th meeting, um, the, uh, one of the taxpayers who spoke said that that wasn't the case, and that Fulton had been applying it the way that he had asked for it to be applied, uh, so our task was to go back and speak with Fulton. Well, I spoke with the chief appraiser, the deputy chief appraiser, the, uh, member of their Board of Tax Assessors, and, uh, an attorney in the county attorney's office, and what I discovered was that up until the day that I actually reached out and spoke with them, they were applying it the way that Milton has been applying it. My conversation with them sparked further discussion amongst themselves. They came back to me the next day and told me that from that, that day forward, they're applying it a different way. Uh, they came up with an inter, interpretation that was different than our office, it was different than the taxpayers of Milton had requested, um, so this was a, a third possibility on the table, and I think that underscores the, uh, the problem with the way this language is written, is reasonable people can look at it and come up with, now we have three reasonable interpretations of it.
We did in fact actually, but we did double down on the specific question, and Aaron, check me on this, that the council asked, and that was, historically speaking, was it applied the way that Milton has been and will continue to apply it, and we in fact did get confirmation that that was true, that they had historically been applying it the way we have been and will continue to even after this charter amendment is adopted, if you should choose to do that.
Okay. So the concern that I've had, that I mentioned before, Ken, and you correctly stated, is we don't want to impose any new taxes on the citizens of Milton. However, if we're, if we were somehow, or if a mistake was being made by another jurisdiction, we don't have to support their mistake, okay?
Yes.
So what you're saying is that we're fixing the language, we're aligning it with what we believe the true intent of the law should be.
Yes.
And we're gonna enforce that in a consistent manner moving forward.
That is correct, in a way that Milton has enforced it since Milton's inception.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Matt?
And that's not to say that our current language was necessarily implying a different method, it's just being interpreted as such, and that's all it was, so our interpretation, other people's interpretations could be different. That's all it is.
That's correct. That, that's right, and, and, and again, I think Aaron makes a good point. I mean, the, the problem with the language, uh, is, is made evident by the fact that when you call it out to somebody and ask them to take a look at it, they come up with an interpretation that heretofore, none of us, I mean, even a third, very odd interpretation. And so Milton is actually, I think, doing everyone a service by taking this on.
Bill?
Would you say again, who came up with a third interpretation?
That was Fulton County. The chief appraiser and a member of the Board of Assessors had met, once I brought this to our attention, that Milton was looking into it. They went back and took a deeper look at it. I believe they were in the process of reviewing all of their homestead exemptions regardless, and they came back to me the next day and had this proposed third way to read it. Uh, I spoke with a staff attorney in the county attorney's office for Fulton County the, the following day, and after speaking with her, I am not sure if, uh, that was in fact their final new interpretation, or if that would still go back to the drawing board yet again.
So where's the variation or the differential in that third interpretation?
The difference in the interpretation was that they were giving the, or they intended to give the full credit for the $63,000 in, um, retirement income, and if somebody had earned a dollar of non-retirement income, that would disqualify them. Um, the way that we've been advocating that this should be read is that you could take someone's gross income combined, and as long as it doesn't exceed that $63,000 threshold, they would qualify. Uh, so Fulton County's proposed new interpretation would be much stricter and, uh, much more restrictive and, uh, than what either Fulton or Milton have historically done, and for that reason, I don't think they'll end up sticking with it, but that was what they came back to me with the next day, as what they thought the true interpretation was.
Well, how do we conform with any consistency out here at all? If Fulton County is taxing us, and their, their, uh, rules and regs vary from ours, we, we have two rules for taxation, then is that correct or not?
Uh, that would be the case, if Fulton County continued to read it one way and we read it the other, but I can tell you that wouldn't be uncommon. Um, the situation here in Milton is, is slightly unusual in that Milton's homestead exemption language is identical to Fulton's to begin with, and a lot of counties and municipalities, you'll see different language from one, that the county will have its own independent language under a different set of rules, and the city could have something completely different. So the fact that right now Milton and Fulton interpret them the same is itself an anomaly, and I don't think it would cause any problems going And I don't think it would cause any problems going forward. In a sense, right now Milton is already duplicating the work because Fulton County applies the same standard as Milton does. And I believe the city of Sandy Springs, for instance, has Fulton County handle the review of their applications to begin with.
I just want to make a statement. You know, this exemption, you know, are what we all believe, and I think council and staff and whatnot, you know, is available to seniors age sixty-five and over and disabled persons with moderate to low incomes. That being said, that sixty-three thousand, I don't think anyone would ever argue that this, you know, you want, allow someone sixty, up to sixty-three thousand dollar income that, that exemption. I think most of us would, would agree, and I certainly do, that the way it may have been written was not the intent. And when you go to, I, I sure would hope, you know, I'd love to be over sixty-five and retired and have a problem of having over a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of income, but I certainly wouldn't expect to get a, a big exemption. So again, you know, just to make, clarify, this is not to, you know, take away or, or tighten up on anything or, or tax anybody or seniors or whatever. We still all totally agree that the exemption, you know, everybody deserves the exemption, but just the way it was written was, I think, most, all of our taxpayers would agree that it was a little, you know, erroneous the way it was stated, so.
Bill?
Just to revisit a comment that was made by Mr. Mills in the last two meetings. Refresh my memory, how does this apply to a surviving spouse? How does the exemption, is, does that continue at the same rate?
Yes, Mr...
Because the sixty-three represents combined incomes, correct?
Right, so there was initially some discussion within our office regarding whether or not a, an individual would be entitled to the full sixty-three thousand as opposed to limiting that to just a married couple. The language is not entirely clear here, but we think that the weight of authority, the, the weight of the interpretation would be to extend that full sixty-three thousand dollar benefit to an individual and couples. So in that case, the issue with the surviving spouse would not come into play because the surviving spouse would be under the same sixty-three thousand dollar standard as the married couple.
And in practice, I don't know if this is on, this is on, now you probably don't need it. And in practice, it, it, that's the way we have done it since, since our inception, and it's the way that Fulton County has done it as well. So we wanted to make sure that we kept that in alignment.
Okay. Anybody else? Let's see, on this, we would need to take a motion on this for this time. So if there's nothing else, I'll open up for a motion. You were ruckier getting ready to say something.
Well, just, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was just gonna remind the council that if you are making a motion to approve the resolution in your book, to please add that the June twentieth language as well, on that very back paragraph that says adoption at two consecutive meetings. Really, the meetings where this is gonna be adopted are the June sixth meeting and the June twentieth. I'm not counting first presentation as the actual adoption of this resolution.
This just comes for us twice.
That's correct, thank you, yes.
Without the next vote, it would be a normal vote. Okay, Tom, Joe, did you want to make a motion?
Sure. I, I move that we approve an amendment to the city, to the Charter of the City of Milton, Georgia, for the purposes of clarifying the income limitations applicable to home state tax exemptions, et cetera. Agenda item number sixteen dash one-one-five, with the final vote occurring on June the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Longoria, for approval. This is the second of our councilmember morning, as he read into the record. Any discussion? Just wanna, Aaron, thank you for all your hard work in Canada. It's been a tough thing, it's, it was pretty eye-opening when you brought it up and, and then we started meeting with other people and just to see the looks on their face once they actually started, you know, folks that...
I agree.
That we would consider way up there looking, and going, oh, wow, you guys are right, so. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I pass you now, Suti.
Thank you, council.
Okay. Suti, if you'll please call our next item.
Next item is consideration to adopt criteria for green space bond, agenda item number sixteen, one-three-three. Ms. Kathy Johnson.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this agenda item relates to the land acquisition criteria that were provided by and voted on by the Planning Commission in April. This was also brought up at the, your May ninth work session. As you know, in February of this year, the city council decided to explore the possibility of whether or not to pursue a bond to provide funds for preserving green space in the city. As part of the process, you asked the Planning Commission to come up with a list of criteria to identify which types of lands within the city should be acquired to preserve that green space. The Planning Commission, as you know, went through four planning commission meetings to gather public input. They, we did a green space survey, a green space link on the website. We put signs, posters, and flyers throughout the community to gather public input. And staff also attended several community events to gather public input. The results of the planning commission meetings plus the public input is in the... It's in the, on the paper right here on this agenda item. And I, I was gonna walk that through with you and read those out, if you don't mind. If you don't want me to do that, we don't have to, but I thought I could read through them and the council can discuss, change, amend, delete, whatever it is that you want to do as I go through each of the criteria categories, the factors, and the tools. The Planning Commission wanted to put the factors inland acquisitions first in the memo. They, they thought they were very important along with the criteria categories. So on page two of the memo, the first factor, again, this is what the Planning Commission voted on along with public input. Land shall be acquired from willing landowners, and no bond funds shall be used to acquire land through the exercise of eminent domain by the city. The preservation of trees should be strongly considered in each land acquisition decision based on any or all criteria. Clearcutting of trees shall be prohibited unless required to meet the needs of the approved project. Acquisition of land that is contiguous or adjacent to existing protected green space parcels is encouraged. Land shall be mainly buildable land unless a non-buildable portion of a tract is a small part of the whole tract or if the land is for trails. And the last factor to be considered in the land acquisitions is land parcels that meet two or more of the three criteria categories may receive priority in land acquisition decisions. So I wanted to allow the council time right now. If you want to have any comment, consideration, discussion, anything on the factors, and then I thought we could go to the criteria categories after that.
Karen?
I would like to answer the first bullet point. Said the exercise of eminent domain by the city unless supported by the landowner to facilitate closing, because we have had that issue come up several times. So we're not gonna use eminent domain to take someone's property, but if we need it to close, I think we ought to be able to use that.
Right, there have been situations where even, you know, getting, getting good title has been difficult, and eminent domain can help.
Just to clarify that to the public, yeah, there, there may be an instance where the landowner may be in full agreement of selling their lands and, and the terms and all are acceptable. But to Councilmember Thurman's point, and Ken confirmed, there may be a, a title issue or something that would, would hold the thing up. But by using eminent, eminent domain, it could be at least moved forward until that's cleared up, so.
And the only other point I might want to consider is land that is in areas that we have decided we need a park or open space to be given a priority. And I'm not sure that we have that anywhere, but it's, you know...
Yeah, when we get to the cri, the, the categories, that, that's the categories, yeah, that would be next. And that's what we're talking about, what the funds will be used for, these types of land. These factors are in overall to be considered in all land acquisitions. They're not really criteria on which, you know, to, to identify the, the parcel of land. It's just overall factors to consider while making the decision of which lands to. So a, a, after we talk about the categories, if you feel like that wasn't addressed, we can come back to that, okay?
Okay. On your fourth bullet point, land acquired shall be mainly buildable. Did you consider environmentally sensitive land? And what comes to mind is the dismal swamp up on Hopewell Road, or something that's similar to that?
Well, the discussion with the public and the Planning Commission regarding this bullet point was they wanted to make sure, the public wanted to make sure that it was ma, it wasn't, that we weren't going to be buying with the bond funds land that wasn't buildable anyway and wouldn't be developed, and, and then to spend, you know, the money on, on, on parcels that wouldn't have been developed anyway. Unless, you know, it was part of a larger tract and there was unbuildable. That's, that's where the language of the small part of the whole tract is unbuildable. So there was a, a public discussion on, you know, significant public discussion on buildable versus non-buildable, and the worry that we would just, you know, buy all the non-buildable land and wasting the money on that because it might not be buildable anyway, unless it was part of a tract. Do you understand? I mean, did I address that, or?
The point you're making, Kathy, is that it needs to be net new conservable land. We don't consider, you know, what'd you call it, the dismal swamp? Would, I live up there, there's a dismal swamp up there.
There is a swamp up there.
Anyway.
We're all familiar with that.
We can't conserve land that wouldn't have been built on anyway. That's not real conservation.
That's right, that's what we're talking about. Although I will tell you, there are, there are times that you can drain a swamp and build on a swamp. I mean, in Florida, they, much of the state of Florida.
Let's, let's not go down that road.
But just saying. That can be done, so, I mean, that's done sometimes.
And I guess my point, my point was, some very environmentally sensitive areas like bird sanctuaries or, or protected species of, of any other sort, if they occupy a space that it may not be buildable. I guess it gets down to the buildable, non-buildable issue. But I think there is somewhat of a gray area in there in what, when you bring up the environmentally sensitive aspects of it.
And, and, and the, the environmental sensitive, that also goes in the criteria when we, when we talk about the criteria. There are, that is under one of the criteria. But if you, if you want to reword this, or do you have suggestions on that, or change it, or?
I'm not into wordsmithing right now.
Matt?
Yeah, I, I think one, and, and, and first of all, when I went to the meeting, I think it was in, in March or early, mid-April, one of those meetings.
Right, the one in the...
Yeah, I did a great job, and everybody that was there was very enthusiastic about the project. One question that I, or one point that I think we needed to make was that just because we're doing the twenty-five million dollar bond doesn't mean that we can't spend money in other areas as well, you know, as far as the city. It just tells taxpayers that when we have this bond, these are the criteria specifically for this fund that we're doing. So if we had a situation where we needed to do additional purchase of an environmentally sensitive area or something, maybe unbuildable land or something like that, but that doesn't mean we're not, doesn't mean we can't spend money on that area as well in a different fund if we ever had the choice to do that. It doesn't restrict us, basically, it just lets taxpayers know exactly what it is we're putting our, our money towards.
Right, and all this relates just to the bond.
Just to the bond, exactly.
So that the public knows what the bond proceeds will be used for. So, yeah, it doesn't mean other things that, that the city could do. This is all very, just bond related.
Sure. I do have one question, and maybe we might talk about it, like, the uses later on. But I know that my appointee, Mark Bender, made a question, made a point that a lot of the people that wouldn't be able to be at the meeting we were at were parents whose kids were playing new sports. And he was thinking that there might be a need for that, or at least an interest by people, but they couldn't be a part of that process in order to make that determination in this. I didn't know if you had done through the research on that question or not.
That was an issue that was discussed. The, the, the active park versus passive park type of thing. And, and that is under the criteria also, and that was discussed. The Planning Commission thought in, in voting on this, and they discussed this, that overall, the public opinion was much more in favor of the passive parks to be purchased with the bond funds instead of purchasing land and making them active parks. There were a few people that, that noted that, you know, they would like active parks. And that's, that's what the Planning Commission decided in the end. But again, all this is for, for the council to discuss and decide, change, amend, whatever.
I know the concern that he had, it wasn't, you know, Mark wasn't, and I agree with him on this, it wasn't necessarily, one was better than the other, but he was more inclined to make sure that it passed. And if he had done any surveys with regards to that on active versus passive outside, I didn't know if he had it.
Well, the survey that we, the survey that we sent allowed people to discuss parks, the, the green space survey, and there were very, very, very few responses that asked for or discussed active parks. And also, the green space link that we had on the website after the survey was done, we had, the, the link was opened all the way to the end of the Planning Commission meetings in April. So through March and April. And there was comments on there, just a few, for active parks. Same when I went to several community events and I got to speak one-on-one with people about parks. Definitely, there was mu, a much larger majority that wanted the passive versus the active, if they brought up parks at all. Some people, you know, didn't even talk about parks. But the ones that did, the majority was for more passive type parks.
So you're, in your estimation, then, we would still, we wouldn't have run a risk of a non-passage if we just only have passive parks, basically, right, so?
There are some, the, the few that I did hear from were, were really wanting some active parks, and, and we did discuss that. And then the people that really wanted the passive parks, I mean, you know, there was, there was a definite division of opinion on that. Some people very strongly, only passive park, and, and a few were very strongly, we would like active as, as well as passive. But I would say, if you're weighing it, if I'm weigh, if you were weighing it, it was more passive parks.
More passive and still a likelihood of passing, based on the research and the survey and everything.
I had one person tell me, if, if it's not gonna be active park, I'm not voting for it.
Gotcha.
Does it hurt to open it up to include not the development of active parks, but the land that could possibly be used in the future for active parks? Does it hurt to broaden this a little bit so that that kind of land, or if a, a certain park became available within, or land became available within the city of Milton that was already developed out as active park land and that the bonds could be used for? I mean, I'm just wondering why you exclude it, if it, if it hurts you to, to make it a little broader?
I mean, you could just say parks, and, and parks would, if you just say parks, that would include any type of park, passive or active.
But this here says parks includes passive and/or mostly unimproved or natural state. So I mean, that, that's pretty narrow.
Right, and that is what the Planning Commission, we discussed, that's what they voted on. That's what they felt like from the public input and their discussion amongst themselves. They made that decision to say, we think
Right.
it should be passive parks.
You know, I, I want...
I mean, sorry, but that is up to the council to, you know, if you want to...
My only point to that, and I know we certainly want to take advantage of purchase as much parkland as we can moving forward. But the reality is, while twenty-five million dollars sounds like a lot of money, you start spreading it out, it doesn't, doesn't buy a whole lot. And so I think, you know, the intention of this bond is to preserve green space, and, and I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that the perception of the green space it, it preserves is, we do the best job we can and that we cover as much ground, so to speak. In doing that, whereas, you know, real quick, we could eat up five million dollars, buy some parkland or ten or whatever. So, you know, I tend to like it the way it is because I think the intent for this is to make, make Milton, you know, look rural when you drive through and whatnot. Whereas, not saying that parks... whatnot, versus, not saying it parks, I mean, obviously, parkland's a very important active park, but, you know, I think people and tax dollars will support that also. But in my opinion, this is, you know, green space to actually look for passive land.
And that's, that's the same conclusion the planning commission came to with this. And this is, again, just for the bond money. It doesn't mean that the city can't use other funds to buy active parks.
Exactly, exactly.
So this, again, just really just green space, and the people that came up.
I just want to make sure it wasn't going to hurt us by getting rid of anybody who only wanted active parks.
I wouldn't, I don't think from the results, from the input, on a large margin, it wouldn't hurt. And we did, in the very beginning, want to term this Green Space Milton, Green Space Bond. So a lot, many people brought that up, too. It's supposed to be green space, and, you know, parks are considered green space, but it was more thought of, you know, open space, passive type of things, that you could still use as parks. Because, and their discussion of passive parks were, you know, if we buy a certain acreage, a tract, that passive would be, you could put trails in, and just not a lot of development. That's why the one discussion on here, when we talked about, what is the one about parks? Limited, no, I'm not seeing it right now. With limited development, or limited improvement? Okay, yeah. It would be more trails, walking trails, hiking trails, horse trails, and maybe gravel parking lot. I mean, this is what came up, what the public said, and not the ball field.
You don't think we're going to lose voters by limiting it this much?
Maybe a few.
Okay.
But I think we might lose more than that by allowing it to be active.
Rick Burton.
Call me whatever you want.
Mr. Burton.
So I guess what I look at this, Kathy, it sounds like it's deliberately restrictive, because it's a green, like Joe said, it's a green space bond. We have other funds, like impact fees and other things that we're going to be using for active or sports-related parks. But even the passive side, you could have picnic areas. You're just talking, you're not, you're not talking about intensive development, just where it's more green space that we can enjoy, and people can enjoy both going by as well as possibly walking if it's trails.
Right, right, yeah. And it was deliberately written this way by the planning commission that didn't want the active. And, yeah, so when they talked about passes, like I said, hiking trails, maybe some picnic tables, a gravel parking lot, not, you know, paved, maybe a porta potty or two, or, you know, some type of bathroom.
So the question's for Burton.
Thank you, Burton.
Okay, so then I was going to go on to the criteria categories. And like I said, the planning commission wanted me to go over the factors first, that they were putting. So the criteria categories, so we put it into three categories that includes many subheadings, I guess, bullet points. The first one was green space, open space. And that was preserve general areas of green space, green or open space, including pastures, horse farms, wooded areas, larger tracts of undeveloped land, open space between newer existing subdivisions. So that category also includes, specifically could include protecting natural resources, and this is the bill, the council member, Lus, sorry, the environmentally sensitive areas, the protecting natural resources from development, especially the wooded and tree areas with special concentration on preserving as many trees as possible. There was a lot of discussion of trees during all this public input, and preserving the trees. So the planning commission felt that it needed to be in the criteria. Protecting wildlife habitat and corridors from development by preserving areas in their natural state that are home to wildlife, including identifying and preserving wildlife corridors. There was definitely discussion on wildlife corridors. Protecting water and watersheds from development by protecting areas with water, rivers, ponds, lakes, creeks, streams, stream buffer areas, and watersheds. So that's the open green space criteria category. The other, the next category was rural views and rural character. So let me just tell you first about the categories and how we came up with them. There was just, there were many comments through the survey, the survey link, and through the public in person on the, at the meetings, and there was just many things thrown out there. So we took it and we tried to put it in the categories just to make sense and lump them together on what fit together. So that's how we came with these categories. So the rural views and rural character, protecting or conserving the rural views along roadways, protecting or conserving the rural field look, setting, and character of Milton, protecting historic resources, and protecting agricultural uses of land, including farms, horse farms, et cetera. And then, trails and parks, the third category, establishing new trails and connecting existing trails based on the Milton Trail Plan, trails for walking, biking, and horse riding, either through separate or combined use trails, depending on the location, need, and the trail plan, trails that connect parks, schools, and commercial centers, including connections to greenways. And then parks, including passive and/or mostly unimproved or natural state parkland, with the possibility of creating trails and minimal improvements to provide public access. These types of parks could include pocket parks or larger track parks. So I would like to open any of these up to discussion and comment.
Anybody have a question?
No question.
Karen?
Can the, the bond funds be used just to purchase the land, or what, can they actually be used to put in the trails and all for the parks?
They can be used to include the infrastructure improvements.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
And I will say, if you want to look, I also, there's another handout that I gave you, and I gave this to the council at the May 9 meeting also, the public input regarding green space. And there, the survey results are in there, the percentages, and it gives you an idea of, you know, what were, what were the top, the top items that people discussed in the survey, and through the emails on the website, in a percentage. And parks and trails were top, number one, in all of those surveys.
Bill? Kathy, to Karen's point about whether the bond includes improvements to these parks, which is answered, may not be a discussion that we need to debate or consider at this time. But down the road, if this does include improvements to certain parcels that we're doing, I think the question needs to be discussed at some point in time. Will it include maintenance, operation and maintenance, and if so, how long could we do that? I guess it would have to be part of our general fund discussion.
That's right, yeah. We're not going to be able to use the bond proceeds for just ongoing maintenance. That's going to be out of our general fund, which is always one of the costs we have to factor in to what we can afford.
Well, obviously, we'll run out of funds, so we couldn't anticipate the O and M costs going forward anyways. But I think that's a discussion we need to have here, probably during the budget discussions.
And maybe a generalized rough estimate of what a general cost per, or maintenance cost per acre of, on use green space might be, would help with that. Because I agree with that was, you know, it was Forsyth County had the issue when they were making their ballot parking, it was, and they had enough to make it, to build it, they just hadn't, didn't have enough to run it.
Yeah, it's expensive. There's no question that the maintenance can sometimes subsume the acquisition and construction costs over time.
I'd like to know what the maintenance costs are for the Big Creek Greenway in Forsyth County compared to the cost of construction.
Absolutely, right. And it's, based upon where that thing is located, too, it's got some challenging architectural and elevation features on it that can make maintenance long-term, particularly flooding issues and so.
Right, right. And that can go, again, to the, you know, the passive versus more of the active parks. The less you're going to do, the less improvements you're going to make on the land, I would think, that would be less, less maintenance. But, you know, if there's a gravel parking lot, you might need to regravel that sometimes. Have you known that?
I guess my mind is more oriented towards the trails.
And the trails. And there could be, like you said, with the impact fees, other funding opportunities for trails as well.
Yeah, I think the maintenance is very important. You look at the trails out in front of Birmingham Falls Elementary School, they don't look very good. Not trails anymore. So, you know, I mean, really, because they have not been maintained, they're not really useful as they were originally built. So it's important that we.
Is that something that the council would like to put in here somewhere?
No, I mean, I think that's something when we're looking at parcels, though, we do need to consider is how much are they going to cost to maintain. So we want to make sure we don't build a lot of things that are going to cost more to maintain than we have in our budget to maintain them.
But I do think, too, the emphasis on trails is extremely important. You know, I mean, in the end game, if we're buying the land, it's for people to walk on it, horseback riding, or things like that. And, you know, obviously, we want to make sure we're clear with regards to what mode of transportation on these trails we want to use, whether they would be gravel or paved or not. I'll make those clarifications with regards to the planning commission. But, you know, I think that that would be the end game for any purchase that we want to do, in my mind, is people walking around to see the natural elements of our city.
Carter wants more gravel trails.
Right, and that's when, under the trails, and that's why we linked it to the trail plan, because I know there's a trail plan, and there's all those, you know, it's been mapped out. So, one of the criteria, yeah, we linked it to the trail plan, and then depending on the location of the trail, and so, there's some room there for them to decide what kind of trail, what the uses are.
Well, it's not a one-size, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. Hopefully, we will have some of all different kinds of trails. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of gravel trails, and we'll have some paved trails, and everything else, so that you can, you know, be used by a lot of different people.
And the trail plan helps with that, it helps define that. The other thing, any more discussion on the criteria?
We're good.
The other thing that the planning commission did, did discuss or did not discuss much, was initially, the council had asked the planning commission to prioritize or weight the criteria. After the planning commission went through this process, they did not feel comfortable doing that. So, they didn't feel like they could, given their input. So they wanted to make sure that you, that the council knew that, and if the council wanted to do such prioritization or weighting of the criteria, you know, they were giving that to you for consideration, if you want to do so. And again, all of these criteria are to be used someday, if the bond passes, to guide the committee, or whoever it is will make those decisions on what parcels to either acquire, do a conservation easement, guidance on what to do. And so the public knows what criteria that committee or that group of people or person is going to use. And so that's why we're doing this whole exercise, it's, you know, for the community and to give guidance. So, I'm not, I don't know if the council would want to do that, to prioritize or weight, or not do so.
I think the term is abstract. I don't know how we can address it at this time. We don't know what our opportunities are right now.
And the one way, the one thing that we did put in there about weighing it prioritize, is one of those factors discussed, I think it was the last factor, about parcels that meet two or more of those three criteria, if they fit into all three criteria, they may receive priority in the land acquisition decisions. And that was the one way that they dealt with priority and weighting. If it meets all of those criterias in some way, this parcel, then that's a great parcel. So maybe that would be, have some priority.
Well, the one thing that hadn't even been discussed, that may as part of the criteria, is the price. And, you know, I mean, it's, that's, you know, something that meets all of these criteria, but the price is exorbitant, and would use up most of our bond referendum is not what we want. So I think that's, you know, the details, I think, are something we're going to have to look at on a piece-by-piece basis, and I don't know that that's something we need to right now.
Right, right.
Decide.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, I think one of the things that the council needs to provide some direction on this evening, is we've got some steps to take to basically launch the formal procedure of this bond. For instance, I think in our critical path documents, we were, I think the June 20 meeting is when we were going to bring back to the council the resolution calling for the election. And there's two critical elements we have to know when we bring those documents back for your approval. Number one is the bond amount. Right now, in this poll, we polled $25 million. Typically, we would phrase that as up to, and then, of course, there is the ballot language. And so, you know, we worked with TPL and Kathy, and we worked closely with them in putting together the language that was polled. The actual ballot language, as it would be phrased, would be this. Shall general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal of up to $25 million be issued by the city of Milton to acquire conservation land and interest in conservation land for the purpose of protecting farmland, natural areas, and wildlife habitat, providing recreational facilities and park improvements, and paying expenses incident to the issuance of such bonds. Basically, that was what was polled. A little bit of liberty was taken just with some of the introductory language, but that ballot question was what was polled. So if the council were to say to myself, Kathy, the chief tonight, that's the language that we want to advance, that's what we want our voters to see, and we like the $25 million figure, then that's what you will see on the 20th when we bring back the resolution calling for the election.
Worth a question. And this is maybe just semantics, you know, for the purpose of protecting, and the very first item we use is farmland, right? Does that give the, I mean, obviously, that doesn't give the impression to the voters that if we do protect that land, it remains a farm. Obviously, there's a maintenance and operation ability of a farm to stay there, and animals, and someone has to manage that, right? So is that, my question, if that was farmland, would that be an appropriate term to use?
Right. I think the point was to try and emulate as much of what the planning commission had discussed, and within the context of this, but we also use phrases like natural areas, et cetera. I think it's broad enough where there shouldn't be really an expectation that we'll be conducting, you know, agricultural operations on the property. It's simply to protect it for purposes of the view shed and conservation areas. I'm comfortable with that, council.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes.
And part of talking about the formulas and the working farms that are working right now, we have discussed, and that's what I would talk about next, and the tools, was to not just do fee simple purchase, and that would be some of what we could use for the bond funds, but also conservation easements. So the thought was, and the discussion was, on a horse farm, that we wanted to preserve part of it or all of it for the view shed or other reasons. We could, we could put a conservation easement on it, use some of the money to buy the development rights, and then put a conservation easement on it. Then the people, the landowners, own their land, they continue with their farming process. They do the farming, or the horse farming, or whatever it is, and there's just an easement on there, so that they can't develop it in the future.
I just want to make sure that Carter doesn't have to start herding goats or anything.
Councilor Lusk, I want to make a point of clarification, too. You had asked about the maintenance. It is possible to draft a ballot question for GEO debt where maintenance can be allowed, but it has to say that in the ballot question. This ballot question does not provide for maintenance, for uses. I'm very, I'm not familiar with many jurisdictions that include maintenance within the context of the ballot questions, and if we did that, it wouldn't be, it would not be a tax exempt as well. So there's a lot of reasons not to do it that way, but I want to be clear with you, if we wanted to restructure it, but I'm very concerned we would shed votes if we began talking about those sorts of costs, because then they know they're not getting the acquisition bang for the buck.
I think it's.
Hold on, you threw a bell?
Just to comment on that, I think that's probably an indeterminate.
That's right. That's right.
Item, no matter what you're purchasing.
Right.
As far as O and M goes.
Right.
Jake, the Joe? So Steve, what do you want from council on this? I'm, I'm sort of trying to figure out, are we supposed to approve some language? Are we supposed to give you general direction? Are we supposed to say, Kathy, that sounded really, really good. I think we should make some more progress there. What, what are we trying to do?
I'm asking you to vote on, if you so choose, to vote on this criteria. You're going to adopt this criteria.
Which we'll bring back to us.
Yes, or bring back, to vote on the criteria. So the public-
So this is a document, just the bullet points inside the document? What exactly?
Yes, on the, on the criteria categories, as they are written or amended. The, um, and that's, that's the biggest part is the criteria category. These other factors, you don't have to, you could vote on factors or not. It's all going to be used as guidance for that future committee that's going to do the land acquisition. And it gives the public, you know, an idea of what is this money going to be used for.
Okay, so the criteria categories is what you're concerned about?
Yes.
So the fact that it's green space, open space, rural views with rural character, I'm a little confused on that one. And trails and parks, is that right?
Yes.
Those are the only three.
And if you, if you, if you also want to put, want to vote on these factors, it's all, these are, it's not, this is not required by statute and, and, and for the ballot that you do this. This is for the public.
And that's why I'm pointing this out, because I don't want to be more restrictive than we have to be, because we end up handcuffing ourselves and we'll, we'll find ourselves in a situation where we've got money that we can't spend. Okay? I would rather leave it as open as, as we could, so that we're not, you know, trying to predict the future. But I don't want to leave it so open that the people don't know what they're voting for, because I think that's important.
Right.
So...
Well, that's why, that's-
So what are we looking for here, exactly?
Can I jump in? Thanks. Um, thi- this was originally what the planning commission was tasked with, to, uh, to look at some, uh, criteria to send back to you to be able to make sure we're, we're, we're tracking in the right direction. I think that's what kind of birthed this, uh, the, the, the need for us to come before you today. Um, and I, I get where you're coming from. You don't want to, we, we don't want to end up in too tight of a position once we're, we're actually looking to be able to go out there. But I think we can look at this in more general terms than specific terms.
I mean, don't get me wrong. I, I don't have a problem coming to a vote or, or recommending what criteria that we've got. I just want to make sure, because it, this is what we asked the planning commission to do. I get that. They've come back. But halfway through this, I realized, oh, this should probably be part of a report right now as opposed to something that we're trying to pass a motion on. I think.
Recommend, Bill. Just have a question.
I guess, along the same line, are you, you're basically trying to spell out, this is almost like a fact sheet. This is what we're looking to use, the, if, if this goes forward to voters, this is, these are the uses, the, the general uses that we're saying these funds this bond would be used for. But the verbiage that actually will go on the ballot, this is more for education and structure.
And guidance. This would guide that future group of people who would determine, and, and it could be the council to determine every parcel to buy.
What's approved?
We haven't, we, that hasn't been discussed, whether we're having, you know, a commission, a committee, or the council going to make, going to make those decisions. And it's a guiding, it, they're guiding principles on, to the public to say what we're intending and what we would like to use these bond proceeds for. The ballot language is, is a separate thing, and it, you can't use all of this in the ballot language.
To that point about it being a guideline, I mean, this is not something that council can't change later or tweak or define. You know, once this passes and you move forward and, you know, see what the opportunities are out there, but it's just a kind of a roadmap, so to speak, so people can see this is the general consensus of what-
I, I agree, Mr. Mayor, I agree, but we do need to be careful, because the law puts a lot of faith and candidly, a lot of obligations with respect to what we tell the voters before they vote. And so we do have to be careful that, for instance, if y'all were about to adopt and take a motion tonight that says, these are the criteria that we will use going forward, I would want to make sure you're very comfortable that these are exactly the criteria you want to use, because once we tell the voters that way by official action, then, then candidly, what the law says is, man, that's what incentivizes them to vote in favor of it. So to Councilmember Longoria's point, I mean, you've got, you've got 75% of your voters, give or take the margin of error, that have said that based upon the criteria they were asked on a phone poll, they're in favor of this. So I, I continue to believe that what I need from you this evening, I don't even need a vote, I just need to know what you expect to come back on the 20th.
Bill?
I guess to Joe's point and Rick's comment too, and Mayor's comment, just follow up on that. I guess procedurally, what are we going to approve here or consider, put up for consideration? Is it the entire report from the planning commission, or is it just a portion of what's included in this report? Namely, the criteria and the factors? How can we identify specifically what we're going to consider?
Well, I would think it would be, it would be the criterias or, or the factors. And, and the whole reason again for this is, is for the public perception. They're going to be, you know, increasing their taxes with the bond. And, and it's the idea that they know what these, this money is going to be spent.
So we're not considering this whole document, this report, we're extracting just those two pieces of it?
The criteria, i- i- if the council so chooses to do so, or-
So we can identify it by specifically calling out these two articles in the, in the report? Just want to make it clear.
Well, there's two, there's two, there's two trains going down the track right now. I just want to be very clear you understand what train I, I am, because this is policy. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not with you on policy right now. I'm talking about just legality. Starting the, let's do the geo bond train. The geo bond train only needs really two facts from you. Are you comfortable with the generalized language that was polled, conservation use, conservation land, because that's, we've already got bond language written to that and the amount. You give me those two points and the legal train will come to you on June 20th for ratification.
Okay.
And this is, yes, this is the policy, the public perception and the policy, this.
Would it be appropriate for us to make a motion, since we're, this is in new business, to state that the council agrees that this is the general direction, Steve, that we need to be steering in, and that you should use this understanding to put together the additional information that we're going to need, whether it's for the, the legalese piece that we need to worry about, whether it's for the, the educational piece in terms of how we're going to communicate some of this, whether it's for the, I don't think we're even to the ballot language piece yet, so we don't have to worry about that. But, but in general, i- it, this is directionally correct, and so you guys should use that for what it's worth.
Councilor Longoria, that's correct. I am not asking you to approve the ballot language tonight, but when I bring back a product to you on June 20th, the ballot language will be in the resolution calling for the election.
But to, you know, that was the same point I made, which you're clarifying, saying that next time we vote on it, we'll need to be sure that's what we're doing.
And you'll have a full opportunity for this spirited discussion then, absolutely.
And, and some of these criteria in the public input, you know, have, has guided some of that ballot language.
It has. I agree with that.
So that's where this criteria plays into the ballot language, is some of the public input, you know, frames that ballot.
And she makes a good point, because if it was simply just parks, we would have just drafted it to say $25 million to acquire parks. The focus on conservation this, conservation that, farmland, wild, wildlife habitat, that was all very specifically drafted based upon the product of the feedback from the planning commission. That was on purpose.
And as far as the final use, I mean, you could, if you're, if the plat allows, you could even look at a community garden or something like that, but we don't need to, we don't need to consider that right now. We're just talking about what type of property are we going to use, would this bond go towards?
And so what direction, we, you want to get some affirmation on the, uh, these criterias? Or, or just basically in general, the entire, Kathy?
Well, again, from the policy point of view and the public, so that the public knows that the, and, and this is from my point of view, the non-legal point of view. So the public knows what, if they go and vote for this bond, what it's going to be used for. And there are, the ballot language is going to say a few words. You know, there's going to be a few very general categories. This describes those categories a little bit more, um, and this is what the public has said and they want from the bond. So, i- it is a public policy and a public perception of knowing that this is what you're, the bond funds are going to be used for, and it's, and, and you have, and you're guided by something. So it's not just, oh, this, this commission or the council will just decide, you know, without any guidance, what they're going to buy with these funds.
Maybe, maybe I'm missing something here. I guess, what do you expect, or what would you anticipate crafting of a motion would be in this?
So, for the, for the criteria, you, you can adopt the general, and out of this criteria, whatever you want to adopt. If you want to just say these three, green space, open space category, rural views, rural character category, and trails and parks without the bullets to make it more general?
Well, we, we could. Let me, let me ask, and, and again, I don't want to get in the way, the, the policy discussion is a robust one and it's, we're going to have time for that. My, my expectation is a little, is a little less ambitious for this evening. I would just like to know, Mr. Mayor, if there is an, if, if the council believes the $25 million figure is where we want to be? I don't even need a motion on that. I just need to look heads nodding is really all I need.
Twenty-five, I mean, we've discussed it before, it kind of had a basis, so.
That gives me enough then to know to, to form the resolution. The next thing I just want to know is, and again, to, to Kathy's point, and it's a good one, is that is inherent in this language to acquire conservation land and interest in conservation for the purpose of protecting farmland, natural areas and wildlife habitat, providing rec facilities and park improvements. That sound, that, I think that is a distillation of the planning commission recommendations, and that appears to be where the council wants to go. Is that generally where we are? Then that's all, was for my purposes, again, less ambitious than perhaps the public perception issues that I know Kathy's trying to get to, to tell the, the voters what in fact they're going to be voting on. I don't know that we need to, to, to resolve that this evening. Uh, that, that doesn't mean you can't. I just don't know that you need to. My, my purposes are much more utilitarian. I just need to know what to bring back to you on June 20th. And you've given me the guidance I need. I know exactly what you'll get, and then you can kick up this discussion again then.
And, and correct. So, so what is just needed is what he says legally, what, what we need to do. This, again, is all for public, for public perception and pub, a public policy type of thing, to show the public, this is, because I will tell you, discussion through all the input was, well, what is green space? Well, I don't know. I think it means this. I think it means that. And there was a lot of discussion about what does green space mean?
That's a, that's a great point.
All this came from. And as you can see, many different ideas of what is green space and arguments as to what green space meant. So, that's why the planning commission said we, we need to define this a little bit, define green space. And that's where we came up with all of these bullets, is trying to define it and, and, and narrow it down into categories. And so it's a public policy. If, if the council does not want to vote, that's fine. There's no requirement, I guess, no requirement for you to, to, to vote on this.
Let me say something. When I, I don't know if you had the privilege of going to one of the meetings, but I thought that everybody that was in the room was of single-mindedness with regards to what it is they wanted to object. And it was really a, a good thing to see for a lot of people, because we really got some clarity and a lot of people working together to get this document that you got put together. You know, and I know as a, as a community, we've disagreed in some things as well, but this is the first one where I saw people that were at each other's throats, working together on this particular project. And, um, and that was a good thing to see. But there's a lot of work and a lot of good, valid discussion that went into that. I would be in favor of, of this document as it is before us. I don't think it's too specific that it limits us. I think it is, um, though it, it does fit with a lot of good work that a lot of people put together. Where I think in general, for the most part, our community is in agreement. I think it would be good for the council if we did adopt it, but that's just my own thought. Karen?
I'm fine with adopting all of it, other than that, to add that one comment in about allowing eminent domain, if, if a land donor is in favor of it.
Does that, does that hurt us more than help, you know, could it hurt us more than help us, Karen? As long as we know the intent?
Well, I mean, n- n- no. I mean, I think that to the extent that you make a policy declaration that you're not going to use eminent domain unless it helps clear up title, but otherwise, no. To Councilman Longoria's part, uh, you will be, you will be stuck with that then. That will be a, that will be a statement of policy you won't be able to walk away from. And sometimes, you know, there may be a piece of property, again, can we talk hypothetically here just for a moment? There may be a piece of property that the council and the criteria realize is the piece of property you want. And, again, it's a tool that, is a tool in your arsenal, is all I will say.
Yeah, I think we're giving you guys, for the most part, what you guys wanted. I don't know that adopting anything makes sense right now, because again, I don't want to be held to some standard that I didn't intend to create. So, so if you guys want to come back to it, well, you are going to come back.
I am coming back to you.
So it doesn't really matter. The 20th is what we should be voting on.
So I guess my question is, at this point in time, in the, in where we are in the process, you're just basically saying, this is what public input has told us, this is what the planning commission has distilled. Are you guys in general agreement? Is that what you're wanting from us today?
Yes.
Not necessarily passing, voting and passing on this?
Right. And, and the council does not have to vote on it. It was a suggestion by staff to vote on it, to show, just the criteria. I didn't mean the whole report though. I, I meant just the criteria. To show the public that you are in favor of this and this is your intention, so the public knows there are guidelines that you will use their money for. And that was what they wanted. I, I'm not saying it's from, they wanted, they didn't say we want to vote from council. They wanted to know what are the guidelines you're going to use, so you don't get 20, so the city doesn't get $25 million, and I don't know what they're going to spend it on.
And I think, I think you've gotten the affirmation on that, and then we will vote on it. So I'm fine with that when it comes back to us. Everybody's familiar with it now enough to, you know, and tweak it when it comes back to us for a final vote.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we will have the bond, uh, resolution ready for you on June 20th, consistent with this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Hey, city, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a transportation special purpose local option sales tax, TSPLOST project list. Agenda item number 16134, Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, mayor and council. The second bond question that'll be on the November ballot will be one regarding a potential sales tax increase for transportation-related projects. Uh, this is a countywide referendum that has the potential of being on the ballot. And over the past few months, uh, staff has been moving forward with development of a project list in support of, uh, our component of that list. Tonight, I wanted to give you some background on how that list was developed. Over the past few months, we've had discussions here at work sessions and council meetings regarding that list. And the list you have in your packet tonight is substantially the same as that list that we've been discussing. So predominantly, the list has been developed, uh, through our CTP update process. On the left of this slide, you'll see the number of different, uh, public meetings and focus groups that we've had related to transportation improvements throughout the city. Uh, towards the end of the process, we also included a joint TSPLOST meeting and one of our public meetings. Uh, and we've had two online service, surveys. Uh, the first one, we had 1,300 responses, which was outstanding. Uh, the second one is just wrapping up, and we've counted, uh, 850 responses so far. So all of that work and all of that input from the public has gone into the development of our project list. Uh, when you look at the priorities from the public that are coming out, uh, in our work so far on the CTP, vehicular travel has been the number one rated request, walking, biking trails, connectivity, either pedestrian or vehicular connectivity, and sadly down the list, transportation safety is number four.
We're so good at it, that's why.
Uh, most of our list is also made up of, um, intersection projects. So if you look at the intersection projects that are coming out and how they're ranked uh, in our current process, uh, these are top eight. Uh, Hopewell Bethany, um, is our number one, um, intersection project. Uh, over on the right-hand side, you'll see how they're included on our TSPLOST list, either in a tier one project or an, or a tier two project. And if you remember from our previous discussions, the tier one project was based on 85% of our projected revenue, uh, which is 36 and a half million, uh, projected revenue over a five-year period. Uh, so 85% of that represented our tier one list. Um, the next 15% represented the tier two list, and then the next 15%, a hun, up to 115% represented tier three projects. Um, and then just quickly, how the, um, CTP- tier-three projects. And then just quickly, how the CTP surveys allocated budget dollars on the left, and then how our TSPLOST dollars are allocated. So, you can see that there is a very nice consistency between the two. So, on the left-hand side, what we asked the general public was, if you had a set number of dollars, how would you allocate those dollars? And those are the percentages that they, how they allocated them. On the right is the dollar allocation as shown on our TSPLOST list. So, really, the only additional one on our TSPLOST list that wasn't represented in the CTP was bridge replacement and improvements. And, you know, that's probably understandable, that it wouldn't have shown up in the CTP list. So, our, our project list that we've been discussing, and as we're presenting it tonight and intend to present it to the council, the county, if you agree to adopt it, tier-one projects are essentially the same as what we've been talking about in the past. So, the Morris Road widening would be widening from basically Webb Road down to the end of what would be the intersection or interchange project that Forsyth County is working on at McFarland. Would really be an extension of the four-lane Deerfield, I'm sorry, the four-lane Morris section that all the way down to Bethany Bend, or, yeah, Bethany Bend. The Windward Parkway project is a part, project that we are proposing in conjunction with the City of Alpharetta. Currently, the North Fulton CID has a project on the books to add a third left turn lane from Georgia 400 northbound on to Windward Parkway. That would be northbound or westbound. This, that project would drop that third lane at Deerfield Parkway. Alpharetta's project would then continue that third lane on down Windward to Highway Nine, which is probably a more logical terminus of that turn lane. So, that's dollars allocated in conjunction with an Alpharetta project. And then the intersection projects, Hopewell-Bethany Bend, Freemanville at Birmingham, Charlotte Mayfield, Hopewell-Thompson, Hopewell-Hamby, Arnold Mill at Green. A bridge project, which would be the middle bridge on Birmingham Road, replacement of that bridge. The northeast Crabapple Connector Road, which would actually be the Charlotte extension over to the east side of the roundabout that is currently under construction. And then pedestrian improvements, this is a little bit generic than what we talked about before, I think, in the tier-one projects. We talked about the Deerfield Loop and continuation and completion of sidewalks and trails in the Deerfield area. Those dollars associated with the pedestrian improvements represent that project. It's just a more generic title that we've put on the tier-one projects. The tier-two project, so this would represent 85 to 100% of the potential funds. Bethany at Providence, intersection project, Freemanville at Red and other intersection projects. And then pedestrian improvements, again, on tier-two, and this would be a continuation of the trails projects and working our connectivity up Cogburn towards Bell Memorial Park. So, all of those projects, the pedestrian improvement projects would be, to the extent that the dollars would allow, so we would try and make our connections from point A to point B, to have some logical terminuses on those projects to the extent that those dollars would allow. And then the tier-three projects. The tier-three projects, for us, really represent more programmatic-type projects. So, road paving and construction, quick response projects, which would be smaller intersection or pedestrian-type improvements, wherever they may be. Generic bridge and replacement projects. Our primary goal on that is to upgrade and improve those load-restricted bridges throughout the city. And then intersection and corridor improvements would be turn lane shoulder improvements, safety improvements along various corridors. So, of the $36 million that have been estimated as potential revenue, this project list shows little over $54 million in projects. So, what we would ask tonight, if you choose to approve this project list as it's presented, is that you would also authorize staff to amend this project list as may be necessary to conform with Fulton County's format requirements on this list. My guess is they're going to ask us to tier-back or scale back on the tier-three projects and bring those allowances probably more in line with what the estimated revenues are. But if you were to look at this from a graphical standpoint on where all these projects are throughout the city, the green dots represent the tier-one projects, whether intersection improvements, trail projects, or road improvements. And the yellow represents the tier-two projects that we're proposing. And if you went even on a bigger picture and looked at how that is represented in our overall transportation program that we've been working on over the last five years, you can see those that are checked are projects that are currently in process or have been completed, and those with circles are those that would be completed under the TSPLOST program. And let me go back and just mention one thing on one of these previous slides that I meant to talk about. So, you've got two projects on here, the Cogburn-Bethany and the Hopewell-Cogburn, that aren't represented on the TSPLOST list. Those are intersection projects that we have completed under past programs. We're currently looking at them for some operational improvements right now under our current capital program. So, those are not necessarily included in the TSPLOST list unless you looked out at the tier-three projects, in which case they could be included under either corridor improvements or the quick response type lists. We just think that some of the, there are probably some operational things that we could do to improve their capacity. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We are looking for approval of this list tonight, as well as if you see fit to authorize us to modify the list as necessary to comply with Fulton County's format requirements.
And I just want to clarify something, too, and confirm, make sure we're on the same page. Basically, what we're voting on is this list. This is a wish list. And then the county's going to tie it together with everybody else and, and all the lesson, get an, an overall picture. I think we need to keep in mind, these are all, these are ranked, but they're all budget numbers. So, granted, it's like Carter said, you know, tier-three, they're going to have to reel these back in. Even as you go up to some of these others, the numbers aren't going to come in the same. We may, we may only get three-quarters of the way down, but basically, we're just voting on the scope of this list, knowing that some of these numbers may come in double, some may come in less, whatever. We may have to readjust that moving forward. Is that correct statement, Carter?
That's correct.
So, just, you know, again, these numbers are estim, are ballpark estimates right now. So, we, we may not be able to get all the way down the list. We may only get halfway down, or we may, maybe we can get down into the tier-three, but just have to be open-minded about that. Karen?
I've got a couple of questions. Number one, Freemanville and Providence. That backs up for a mile on Providence Road going to Freemanville Road. Is that?
It's ac, it's actually a project that is in our current capital program that we're moving forward with.
People will be asking, I'm sure. Also, so, so we will, we are planning on doing that project. It's, it's not being, we're, it's not on this list because it's not going to be done. It's not on this list because we're going to do it regardless of whether or not this passes.
We're actually starting that process now.
Okay.
So, this, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, this collection wouldn't begin until April of next year.
Okay.
And, right, the collection of the funds, too. So, it's not a instant, you store them all, it's as the money's collected.
What about 372 and Batesville Road? Because it actually backs up, if you're heading north on Birmingham Highway on 372, it actually backs up south of the roundabout at times because people are trying to turn left on to Batesville. I mean, so there are times I can't get through Providence, the new Providence, because people are in the roundabout there. It's backed up that three-quarters of a mile, just because of a, needing a, a turn lane or something for people wanting to turn left on to Batesville.
Right. So, this, this list doesn't represent all transportation projects that could be done, particularly on-system improvements. So, on-system improvements would be those on state routes that Georgia DOT would still be addressing. So, there are still funds out there for other types of project, particularly those on-system projects that they would have the ability to, to complete.
Because I think it's important for people to, to understand that, you know, the projects that, they're going to vote on this if, if they see a project on here that's going to help them. And so, we need to make sure that they don't think, oh, well, they're not going to, you know, they're not, my project's not on here, so I'm not going to vote on it. They need to know that, that we are going to be doing other projects.
Right. And that's why we've tried to base this list off of those projects, which were specifically identified through our CTP process and highly ranked in that process. So, we have tried to go through and get those that were identified in either our public meetings or online surveys that were of high priority to the general public.
But just because they're not on this list doesn't mean they're not going to be done. It may be that they're already in the process of being done, or it may be that we're looking elsewhere to get them done.
That, that is true.
Bill?
So, further to that point, then, when this is, TSPLOST is advertised, can we be specific as to which ones are included in the TSPLOST and those which are included in our, our capital fund? Or identify the ones that are already funded or in the process?
We can.
Just, just to stress that point.
We can.
I have another question. Without getting into the details, what did you anticipate for Thompson-Hopewell intersection? Was that 3.8 include? What type of improvement?
We tried to look at a variety of intersections. So, whether it be relocation of the intersection to align it, or modified roundabout configuration. So, we tried to be conservative in that estimate on dollars to hopefully include our ability to look at a couple of different options. So, we didn't specifically identify one single alternative for that, but we wanted to budget enough that we could look at several different ones in the process, typical to what we do in our normal intersection process.
So, your accident rate on these intersections kind of determine the, the priority list, do you think?
That certainly weighs into it. Safety at the intersections is one of the highest things that we look at when we're evaluating and prioritizing the intersection projects.
And as far as the tier-one projects go, are they listed, are they prioritized on that list? And I know the mayor brought up the point, their budget numbers and depending on our, our revenues, it's going to determine which ones are, are actually constructed.
Right.
So, is a priority, is that a priority list, and would it change depending on funds available?
It would. And, you know, one of the things that we'll do in this process is we'll look at the funding strategy, how funds are going to be received by the city, as well as a more tactical approach. I can't have an entire road closed for two years. So, we'll have to look at a strategy on where the projects are located and how we're going to build them in relation to other projects, as well as how that funding comes in. I don't know, I guess that comes in quarterly, to make sure the projects are funded. And as we get a little bit further in the process, we'll develop that strategy on, on project, project implementation.
Thank you.
Somebody else? Okay, what is, so, you need us basically to vote on this?
Yes, sir.
List here. Did you have something, Matt?
No, I'll make the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve a transportation special purpose local option sales tax, agenda number 16-134, with the, the ability for staff to make amended or make changes as necessary according to, in order to comply with Fulton County format requirements.
Perfect. Thank you.
Second motion.
Yeah, a motion from Councilmember Fute, second, Councilmember Lusk. I think I want to make, make a statement. Number one, thank you, thank you, everybody, for all your hard work and, and help on this. But this is a, maybe an unpopular statement right now, but we have, all have to realize, as we talk about land conservation and traffic and the area growth and cut through traffic, and, you know, we hear about that all, all the time. And as we talk about transportation improvements, it sounds like that's the answer, but we have to keep in mind that, you know, the engineers don't want to hear this, but with all the transportation improvements, it tends to bring more traffic and, you know, traffic finds the easy way. So, sometimes, sometimes the backups, you know, to get through us, the stop sign or whatever, sometimes it tends to funnel traffic other ways. But, you know, as you improve all this, then the consequences are, we're going to have, have more traffic. So. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sutie. Please call the next item.
Our final item this evening is consideration of subdivision plats. First, Manor View Two, land lots 182, 183, 250, and 251. Final plat revision, add water easement, 42.82 total acres, .77 lots per acre. Second, Manor View Three, land lots 182, 183, and 184. This is a final plat revision, add water easement, 31.98 total acres, .81 lots per acre. Next, Smith &amp; Kennedy Construction, land lot 379, minor subdivision plat, create two lots, 2.036 total acres, .982 lots per acre. Next, Parkview, land lot 1169, final plat, create 13 lots, 2.835 total acres, 4.586 lots per acre. Our fifth plat, plat is Blue Valley 3B, land lots 196, 236, and 237. Final subdivision plat, create 38 lots, 55.3 total acres, .69 lots per acre. And number six, 3B Farms, land lot 388, minor subdivision plat, create three lots, 8.863 total acres, .338 lots per acre. Agenda item number 16, 135. Ms. Kathy Field.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Rick?
Kathy, this, I know this is part of the process of making us aware of what is going on with subdivisions and final plats and that thing. Is there any way we could add a street address, a general street address, so those of us, I mean, I'm familiar with where Manor View is, but some of these, that would just be helpful, at least for, for my, my purposes, if we knew where that was, kind of like, is it on Hopewell Road?
Yes, yes. We, we could certainly do that, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, Bill, and then Matt?
Going through these calculations, total acres, number of lots, and density, how does that math work? You get three lots on 8.863 acres?
In terms of the last one, the 3B Farms, and so that relates density-wise to .338 lots per acre. It's, um...
Basically, three lot, three acres per lot.
Right.
That's right. The lower the number, obviously, the larger the lots.
Exactly. Yes. And then we, we do have a townhouse, one, which is number four, Parkview. Those are townhomes. So, you, you can see that the density is 4.58 lots per acre.
Yeah, at, at a 1.0, it would be right at one acre lot minimum versus, you know, the lower the number, obviously, the larger the lot.
That is correct. It's inversely proportional.
And then, obviously, the townhome one is, is a high number. Karen?
I have heard a lot of complaints about the Parkview one, because it's been totally clear-cut. What will we?
Is that, is that the Parkview one right there, or is the Parkview one over on Crabapple Road?
It's, oh, it's just south of Crabapple Road. It's, it's in the Crabapple.
On Crabapple on the south side.
I think that's a small one, Karen.
Oh, it's a small one, okay. The one I think I've thought about is the one on Arnold Mill, that people are so upset about.
Yes, yes. I, you know, it's across from the Polty one, yes.
So, I mean...
And that one, it was, it was a while back when that one was voted on, I think, wasn't it?
Yes. And they've just started the, the clearing of it, within the last two weeks.
So, but as far as tree recompense and things like that, they will still have to do all of that.
That is correct. That is correct.
Have we considered maybe modifying our tree ordinance and the tree recompense plan so that it's not just the specimen trees we look at, but the whole canopy and everything, so that what it looks like, everything's been clear-cut and the bomb's gone off there, that, you know, there's more, a lot more recompense that's required, rather than to discourage the clear-cutting?
And to, to your answer, to your question, the answer is yes. And to your answer, to your question, the answer is yes. The city manager has asked us to look at our tree ordinance, and we are in discussions about the initiative to rewrite the entire ordinance to address the very issues that you're bringing up, Councilwoman Solomon.
Because I think, it seems to me that it really pertains more to specimen trees, and sometimes it's not a bunch of specimen trees, but it's enough quality, quantity of trees that it makes a huge difference to have it all clear-cut.
That's, I, I agree with you, and also, you know, our ordinance really talks to the whole subdivision in terms of tree replacement. And I think we can do a better job of looking at each of the lots, lot by lot, would do a lot as well. So, so those are all issues that we are going to address, and so you will be seeing reports from us as we move ahead with this initiative, but it is underway.
Well, I don't know how we got on the tree ordinance, because we're supposed to be talking about the flats. But as long as we are, we just haven't made it punitive enough, because if somebody wakes up in the morning and decides it's okay to clear-cut, because what he's got to put back is not that big of a deal, we, we just, we haven't gone far enough to make it this penalty, the right penalty.
You know, I, I'm going to make another comment, just like I did on the transportation, and it's, you know, your tail wags a dog or vice versa, and from, you know, some of these developers, it's not necessarily, I don't believe these developers want to come in and clear-cut. A lot of it goes back to environmental, which it sounds crazy, but environmental issues, drainage, traffic, you know, a lot of the engineer stuff, all the stuff that's required there, elevations and stormwater and whatnot, basically makes the developer have to change the topo enough and all that, the clears come out. You know, what we really have to look at comprehensive would be not just to say it's, it's, there's dollar damages if you cut down a tree, it's, hey, we'll allow you to, you know, not have to shape the land differently and the runoff differently and this and that, and EPA requirements and whatnot, if I'm, you know, tell me if I'm a base car.
Well, we just need to find us some creative way.
A way, a way that you can allow, because I think there are a lot of probably developers and people want to buy homes that would much rather buy if you just wanted to cut the driveways and, and some roads. But with engineering practices and safety and stormwater and EPA regulations and all that, it makes you change the elevations enough to where you have to take the trees out. Matt?
Just Mike, Kathy, are, are all these, are all these plats except for Parkview AG one?
Yes.
Just want to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Kathy. I'll open up for a motion on these plats. I'll make a motion that we approve, agenda item sixteen dash one-three-five, approval of subdivision plats.
Second.
I made a motion, I have a second, my Councilmember Moore, again, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, anybody have anything that council, any discussion, reports or anything?
Great Memorial Day.
Yeah, good job, and good job, Bill, and everybody. Stat.
Thanks, thanks for the, the group that also, or for the, the memorial markers that were put out along too, and the citizen involvement. Bill, thanks for your organization for putting that together.
Thanks for all the volunteers. That's what makes it happen.
Good deal. Stat, any reports?
We are just finishing up our, our strategic plan, and we'll be reporting on some more strategic numbers. I believe our first ones are at the turn of the July, the first July meeting.
All right, now I will open for a motion to a juror.
Motion to a juror.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sudi.